It currently falls under the federal definition of tobacco products. The federal definition is, the term tobacco product means any product made or derived from tobacco that is intended for human consumption, including any component, part, or accessory of a tobacco plant. So that's the federal definition. The nicotine that is in e-cigarettes is derived from the tobacco plant. There's no place else on earth you get nicotine but from tobacco. It is a tobacco product. Beyond that, and you can't make this stuff up, but I'll share you a wonderful little story. One of the major players in the industry called Enjoy. At a time before Congress authorized the Food and Drug Administration to be able to regulate tobacco products, at the time they could only regulate cessation devices, Enjoy sued the Food and Drug Administration, claiming they were a tobacco product. They were not a cessation device, because if they were a cessation device, then FDA could regulate them. They went to court. The judge ruled in Enjoy's favor. And I'll read to the quote from the judge in his opinion. The firm claims that its electronic cigarettes use a liquid nicotine mixture derived from tobacco and that its products are not marketed for therapeutic reasons, uses. So the court ruled, yes, you were right, Enjoy. You are a tobacco product. You were not a cessation device. Now, of course, it's more convenient to be a cessation device, not a tobacco product. Clearly, you can't have it both ways. Just saying that something is a cessation device doesn't make it a cessation device. There are clinical tests that must be held. You must apply to the FDA to become a cessation device. And to date, this industry, which has grown from $1 billion in revenue just a few years ago to 2.5 billion, a year ago to 3.5 this year, they have not yet taken the time or trouble to go to the FDA to apply, to be determined to be a cessation device. Bless their hearts if they want to do so. I'm not here to say that it's not. But if they were to, and should they be determined to be a cessation device, then this bill will not impact them, because this bill just deals with tobacco products. But it gets even better. I can show you some information from the industry's own websites. This product is called Mark X, and it is an e-cigarette product. Under ingredients, it says tobacco-derived nicotine. And then it has a warning on it, and this is done by, not by dictative law, but proactively. The warning on the Mark X package says, "This product is not a smoking cessation product and has not been tested as such." Then it goes on to say, "California Proposition 65 warning, this product contains nicotine, a chemical known to the state of California to cause birth defects and other reproductive harm." But that's not the only one. Vapor, which is an RJ Reynolds product, calls itself an innovative digital tobacco product. You can go to their website. It's right there. They call themselves an innovative digital tobacco product. They go on to say that they heat liquid containing nicotine derived from tobacco. It goes on to say that this product is a tobacco product under federal law. And then just one more. The industry continues to grow, and as has already been noted in a number of studies in the past couple of years, the nicotine content in e-cigarettes is more than doubled. And now, the next step is Philip Morris, they use an e-cigarette with real tobacco. So it would seem rather clear that this is a tobacco product. Now, what motivates me so is that the fastest growing market segment of this very quickly growing industry is made up of children in middle and high school ages. Students who have never smoked a traditional cigarette before are now smoking e-cigarettes. And they contain nicotine. Nicotine is a neurotoxin, which is highly addictive and can cause harm especially to young brain development. It's illegal to sell in California e-cigarette products to those under 18. But these companies market legally, because they're unregulated by federal law. They market to our youth in flavors like Gummy Bears and Tooty Fruity and Mountain Dew and Root Beer. It's clearly designed to hook young children with a sweet taste, and once they're smoking, vaping, they're taking in nicotine. This should be a great concern to everybody. We have spent the past 25 years and over $2 billion here in California trying to get people to be wiser about using tobacco products. All of that is at risk. And this is not by chance. This is well thought out. Wells Fargo has estimated that within the decade, 75% of this industry will be owned by the three large tobacco companies. They think they have found their holy grail, a safe delivery system of their toxic addictive nicotine. That's what it's all about. Big profits for big tobacco. And to the degree that they can sell us all, that it is not dangerous like cigarettes, that it's a safe delivery system, and as long as they can keep legislators from defining e-cigarettes as tobacco products, their profits will only grow further. So I just want us to be very clear minded about what's before us. If all that weren't of concern in and of itself, the Wall Street Journal just last week reported a story regarding a study. The headline says, "Study Finds Ninth Graders Who Use E-Cigarettes Are Four Times More Likely to Smoke Traditional Cigarettes." So children who have never smoked a traditional cigarette are getting hooked on nicotine, and within six months, 31% of them are now smoking traditional cigarettes versus 8% of their colleagues who have never tried e-cigarettes. That is what's happening. It's happening right before our eyes. So I just want to, because you're going to hear from the opposition, and it's an earnest opposition, and they're going to giggle and laugh because they don't believe what I'm saying is sincere, but it is. There's small business people here. You're not going to hear Big Tobacco. They know better than to come to a committee hearing and show their face. There's small business people. Many of them believe that they are smoke-free, meaning they're no longer using traditional cigarettes, because they now are smoking e-cigarettes. And that is beneficial to them, to their families, that the second-hand emissions are less dangerous than traditional cigarettes, because it's being heated, not smoked. This bill will not impact their lives one bit. And I don't know where they get the misinformation that it will. In fact, there are already 178 cities and counties in California which already have local laws on the books, similar to what we're considering here today. That represents almost 19 million Californians. So more than half of the state already has this sort of regulation at the local level, because they've exhausted their patience in having the state or the federal government take action. So with the last committee hearing, we heard, again, very earnest people saying that they owe you, vape shops, that they've got eight employees, they think the sky, according to what they said, the sky will fall, they'll have to fire their employees, close their small businesses, and someone's going to take away their e-cigarettes, and they'll be forced to get their nicotine that they're addicted to back from original traditional cigarettes. That's not conjecture. We came upon a tweet that was put out by NotBlowingSmoke.org, which is an advocacy group, and they sent out a message today that says, "Health, lifestyle, and your business are all at stake." Health. The suggestion is, we're going to take away the e-cigarette, they'll be forced to get their nicotine from traditional cigarettes. Not true. Lifestyle. Again, somehow this is going to impact how they live, how they take in their nicotine. Not true. And your business is at stake. And it says to, "Be in Sacramento on Wednesday at 1:30 for the Senate Health Hearing. Close your shops and bring your customers or get ready to close down." I don't think it does our conversation any good when such misinformation is put out there. Let's have an honest conversation. This is not going to curtail any businesses. What it will do is by law state that where you cannot smoke a traditional cigarette, you cannot vape. And I don't think that's such a radical notion, because we also have information from another vape advocacy group called Vapor Vision, do's and don'ts for vapors. And one of them, one of their don'ts is, don't vape where you cannot smoke. Be courteous. So even advocates for vapors are suggesting that's a good idea. And then with regard, so that's the one big half of the bill. The other half, of course, is to put this under the Stake Act. And for those not familiar with the Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement Act, it gives law enforcement additional tools to be able to go undercover and even to use teenagers as decoys in these sting operations, to go into retail establishments to catch retailers who are selling to minors. We use the Stake Act for traditional cigarettes. It has cut illegal sales to minors significantly. We think we can have the same success for those who are illegally selling to minors e-cigarettes. It puts it under the Stake Act. I can't imagine anyone would disagree with that. And so for all these many reasons, I think this is a very solid bill. It will definitely protect a next generation. For those who are currently using e-cigarettes instead of traditional cigarettes, there's no determined proof that it's safer, but I would encourage more people to smoke them too. Just the second-hand emissions. Though the California Department of Public Health has said that the emissions consist of at least 10 known chemicals that are listed on Prop 65, cancer-causing drugs. At least it doesn't smell and it doesn't cling to clothing and the environment as traditional cigarettes. So I am in no way opposed to those who need some nicotine and decide to get it through electronic cigarettes rather than traditional cigarettes. This bill will not impact your life one bit. And I hope that people can understand that that's the truth. I am not blowing smoke. So we have a number of folks here, a number of them from the scientific community, so you can hear a bit more from those who know more than I as to why we should, for purposes of public health, support this bill today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and position.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. So I see him on behalf of Health Access California. We are the statewide healthcare consumer advocacy coalition committed to quality, affordable healthcare for all Californians, and we are here in strong support of SBX 25. The CDC has shown that nationally, the usage of e-cigarettes amongst young people has tripled in just one year. We've gone from 600,000 high school students using e-cigarettes in 2013 to 2 million. These numbers are just very staggering. Yesterday, a study found funded by the National Institute of Health found that students who use e-cigarettes are much more likely to try regular cigarettes. The study focused on ninth graders at 10 public high schools in Los Angeles. Senator Leno stated earlier, students who use e-cigarettes are four times as likely to smoke traditional cigarettes. We're looking at an entire generation lured into a lifetime of tobacco addiction using new technology, but really the same old tricks. Sleek ads use much of the same imagery that tobacco companies employed 50 years ago. E-cigarettes have been described as training wheels for cigarettes. Flavors such as gummy worms, Captain Crunch, and bubble gum are designed specifically to appeal to children. Comprehensive tobacco control strategies in California have saved more than a million lives and more than $1.34 billion in the last 25 years. This new pathway to tobacco addiction really threatens to undermine the great progress that we have made here in California to tackle tobacco use. The explosion in the popularity of e-cigarettes among the youth should be a flashing red light to us, that we are facing a very serious problem. Not only will this bill ensure that youth avoid a lifetime of addiction, but it does so in the most economical way by treating e-cigarettes as tobacco products. Given that the tobacco companies have embraced e-cigarettes and in control, an increasing share of the marketplace, it really is critical that we treat e-cigarettes as what they are, traditional tobacco. Thank you.
Diane Subkovic. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Diane Subkovic. I'm a practicing cardiologist and board president of the American Heart Association and longtime volunteer of the American Heart and Stroke Association, Western States Division. In my practice, I see patients with coronary disease, high blood pressure, diabetes. You're all aware of the risks of smoking and how it is number-one modifiable risk factor for heart disease and stroke and the leading cause of preventable death in California and the nation. I've been fighting the good fight to prevent this in my career and have been largely successful. But what we also have to think about is what constitutes a cigarette. Of course, we have the carcinogens associated with smoke, but the nicotine is what's addictive. The nicotine is what constricts the blood vessels. The nicotine is what raises the blood sugars and what raises the blood pressure. It's what stresses out the heart. And I'm not even talking about, since I'm a cardiologist, I'm not even talking about what it does to the brain and the difficulties there and the constant stimulation and depression that follows when you try to quit. And in fact, the average nicotine user, it takes seven tries to try to quit. So we don't want to do this to our kids. I'm not going to bore you with the study again. You've heard, it came out in the prestigious journal JAMA, about the ninth graders. What I'm seeing in my practice is kids, I'm seeing kids 12, 13, 14, 15 years old with high blood pressure, with high sugars. So these are kids that are future, and this is a problem that we're facing. So we don't want to do this to our kids. So we are in a unique position here to prevent this. You're in a unique position to prevent this. We were ignorant and failed to react swiftly decades ago when cigarettes came out, and we don't want to look back 20 years from now, when we're trying to treat a new wave of heart disease, because we did not act on this. I do not want to be here 20 years, in 20 years requesting funds and help to treat these new potential patients. I respectfully ask that you support this bill. Thank you for your attention.
We got about a minute and 20 seconds left.
John Lovell, I'm here on behalf of the California Police Chiefs Association, the California Narcotic Officers Association, and the California College and University Police Chiefs Association. We're all in very strong support of this bill.
Anyone else in support?
Hi. Lindsay Freitas here for the American Lung Association in California, proud co-sponsor and strong support.
Thank you.
Tim Gibbs, American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, also a proud co-sponsor.
Please state your name and position, please.
Kimberly Chen with the California Panethnic Health Network in strong support.
Robert Harris on behalf of California Society of Addiction Madison in support of the bill.
Deputy Attorney General Matt Campbell on behalf of Attorney General Kamala Harris in support of the bill.
Sean Rono with the California Peace Officers Association in support.
Kathy Brooks with the Association of California Healthcare Districts, also here in strong support.
David Ford for the Association of Northern California Oncologists and the Medical Oncology Association of Southern California in support.
Erin Gable on behalf of First Five Californians, strong support.
Rebecca De La Rosa with Lady Coalition for Healthy California in strong support.
Hidi Poin representing American Academy of Pediatrics in support.
Tim Shaw on behalf of the San Francisco Bay Area Rapid Transit District. Our board has not taken an official position on the board, but they did support SB 140, which is substantially similar, and have passed a local ordinance to prohibit e-cigarettes on transit properties. Thank you.
Jasmine Gordon on behalf of the California Black Health Network in strong support.
Terry McDayting on behalf of the California State Association of Counties in strong support.
Justin Garret with the March of Dimes in support.
Cherry Jeffy, California Chronic Care Coalition in support.
Gregory Kramer with Planned Parenthood Affiliates of California in support.
Kerry Brennan on behalf of SEU California in support.
Teresa Stark on behalf of Kaiser Permanente in support.
Megan Allred on behalf of California Dental Association in support.
Alexis Fernandez on behalf of the First Five Association of California in support.
Regal with the County Health Executive Association in support.
Kent DeBurke, the Health Officers Association of California in support.
Alicia Sanchez representing the California Medical Association in support.
Tim Madden representing the California chapter of the American College of Cardiology in support.
Michael Radigan on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Santa Clara County in support.
Karen Lang on behalf of Mayor Edwin Lee and the City and County of San Francisco, Mike Fiori from the City Attorney's Office in Los Angeles, the County of Sonoma, and the County of Solano, all in strong support. Thank you.
Dr. Donald Lyman, California Academy of Preventive Medicine in support.
Thank you. Is there any opposition?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Swayze. Appreciate it. Doctor, thank you very much. Yeah. Hello. Hello.
Scott Taylor on behalf of the Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose.
Wait, hold on for just a second. Hold on. We're going to allow the presentation first of opposition. The presentation will be allowed six minutes in total, and then after that, we will be asking individuals their name and position. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. My name is Michael Mullins, and I'm here today on behalf of the Smoke Free Alternative Trade Association, also known as SVADA. As you may be aware, SVADA represents a wide cross-section of the entire vapor product industry, including distributors, manufacturers, and retailers. Its membership is comprised of responsible business owners who are committed to ensuring a path for the continued innovation of products that researchers worldwide have agreed would eliminate health hazards caused by the use of combustible cigarettes. As a member of the SVADA board and as a California business owner, I am here to express SVADA's strong opposition to SB 5, unless amended, to remove the definition of e-cig and vapor products as tobacco. First, I would like to observe that the existing statutory definition of e-cigarettes and vapor products can easily and productively be used to achieve the public policy goals of protections for children and minors and other provisions of SB 5. There is no need to create a new definition in the statute. Second, equating vapor products to tobacco in the context of state laws grossly inappropriate, given that the products clearly do not contain tobacco. Overall, the flawed effort to classify e-cigarettes and vapor products as tobacco also fails to address the fact that vapor products are significantly less harmful alternative to smoking, which kills nearly 40,000 adult smokers each here in California and more than 480,000 adults across the country. While e-cigarettes and vapor products are not marketed as a cessation device, most scientific evidence concludes that e-cigs help smokers stop, including a study conducted on behalf of the American Heart Association. Similarly, the FDA has acknowledged that vapor products may be a viable option to help smokers who are otherwise unable or unwilling to quit. Rather than finding ways to stymie a growing industry, we need to focus the debate on the benefits that vapor products offer related to reducing public harm. Finally, we wish to reiterate our position that SVADA is not opposed to many of the key elements in this bill and the special session package overall, including strengthened prohibitions and enforcement related to sales to minors, child-resistant packaging, and reasonable and fair licensing requirements. But we are fundamentally opposed to the definition of e-cigarette and vapor products, and that such a definition is anathema to those who have deliberately sought to develop and market innovative alternatives to those products and/or who have sought to quit smoking in favor of immensely less harmful e-cigarette and vapor alternatives. Again, we urge you to pursue additional protection of minors and other goals without the inclusion of an unnecessary and inaccurate definition that is neither logical nor scientifically accurate. Thank you for your time today.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Senators. My name is Carrie Hess, and I am co-owner of NorCal Vape in Redding, California, and I am not associated with Big Tobacco in any way. By trade, I'm a registered addiction specialist, and based on my professional training, the harm reduction components of electronic cigarettes or vapor products should be embraced by this health committee. Science has proven that vapor products are 95% less harmful than deadly combustible cigarettes, and in fact, a new study released yesterday by the Public Health in England states, I quote, "E-cigarettes are 95% less harmful to your health than normal cigarettes. When supported by Smoking Cessation Service, they help most smokers quit tobacco altogether. In addition, they found no evidence of a gateway effect that leads people towards smoking." And in reference to the study regarding high school students, it was only an observational study, and the researchers could not prove a cause and effect link between e-cig use and smoking. We oppose the tobacco definition in this bill. We support increased enforcement and penalties for sales to minors. We support child-resistant packaging based on current federal standards. We support reasonable and appropriate licensure. We do not support the tobacco definition in this bill. Contrary to what Senator Leno says, if this bill passes in conjunction with other bills that are being heard today, you're essentially paving the way to tax me and hundreds of other small to medium-sized entities out of California. You will be putting thousands of Californians who work in the vapor industry out of work, and worse, you will have hundreds of thousands of our consumers who are most likely to return to smoking deadly combustible cigarettes. This bill, combined with the other bills being heard, will make vapor products cost prohibitive, and I may be forced to close my doors. A report by State Budget Solutions in March of 2015 states that e-cigarettes are poised to save Medicaid, or in our case, Medi-Cal, billions. I quote, "The game-changing potential for harm reductions by current smokers using e-cigs will flow directly into lower healthcare costs dealing with the morbidity and mortality stemming from smoking combustible cigarettes. These benefits will particularly impact the Medicaid, in our case, Medi-Cal system, where the prevalence of cigarette smokers is twice that of the general public." Senators, you have a unique opportunity to protect not only the health of hundreds of thousands of Californians, but also to protect the financial state of California by voting no on SB 2X5. On behalf of my business, my almost 4,000 customers, my employees, and all of the vapor industry businesses in California, I urge you to vote no on this bill.
Thank you. We're going to now move on to, state your name and position, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Scott Taylor on behalf of the Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose.
Mario Weeks with the Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose.
Stefan Dedak, President of Northern California Chapter of SVADA, on behalf of all our members, we strongly oppose, again.
Danielle Blows from Apollo Electronic Cigarettes and founding member of Not Blowing Smoke, I strongly oppose.
Josh Jones, I oppose.
Kathleen O'Connor, consultant advocate from Lake County. I happen to be a constituent, yours require, and I am very strongly opposed to this bill.
Conrad Hasmore on behalf of the Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose this bill.
A sum long management of Vapers Spot, strongly oppose.
Jeff Nelson on behalf of Cosmic Bog Vapers, we employ full-time 27 Californians, and we all strongly oppose.
Ethu Barrow on behalf of Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose.
Derek Silon on behalf of Vapers Spot, I strongly oppose.
Adam Solow with NorCal Vape, I strongly oppose this bill.
Evan Kimbrough on behalf of Propaganda Liquid, we strongly oppose.
Matt Prince, I'm a vapor, and I strongly oppose.
Joshua French, I strongly oppose.
Derek Iwohi representing Fresno City Vapor, and we strongly oppose.
Justin Byler representing the Vapers Union, we strongly oppose.
Troy Scribner, owner of Vaping Up Northern California, we strongly oppose.
Christopher Tucker with Co-We Liquids, we strongly oppose.
Aaron Peterson with Space Jam Liquids, employing over 50 Californians, strongly oppose unless amended to remove vapor products from the tobacco definition. Thank you.
John Kavanagh from Vaping Industries, I strongly oppose.
Alissa Burke, I'm a vapor, and I strongly oppose.
Ryan's, on behalf of common vaping enthusiasts, I strongly oppose.
Grace Bergonya from Nexus Vapor, is this owner, I strongly oppose.
Vince Satilli from Alloy Blends, I strongly oppose.
My name is Lucy Noble, I work for Steam Distribution and Alloy Blends, combine employment force of over 80 Californians, I strongly oppose this bill.
Abdel Abdo with Beetlejuice Vapors, I strongly oppose.
David Hanson, known as Vaping G, as I'm a health and vaping advocate, I was a credentialed multiple subject school teacher since 2003. I currently own two vape businesses, and I strongly oppose this bill and its piggyback agendas.
My name is Alan George McDonald III, I'm with Holy Grail Elixirs. My grandpa and father died of heart disease because of cigarettes. I will be the first McDonald not to die because of these machines. Thank you.
Sean Crabbe, Vapor One on the Grid, and I strongly oppose.
Austin Ternell, I'm employed in the industry, and I strongly oppose.
Kristy Smith, I own Co-Own No Butts About It, and I strongly oppose.
Tom Riddell, co-owner of No Butts About It, and I strongly oppose this bill. Thank you.
Marissa Magaon, I'm employee of the vapor industry, and I strongly oppose.
Johnny Ho of Altamain, I strongly oppose.
Rich Keller of Zill Vapors, I strongly oppose.
Chris Gasco, first I'd like to apologize for laughing cough while you were speaking earlier, Senator Leno. And I'm strongly opposed to any bill that labels my zero nicotine liquid and device as a tobacco product. Thank you.
Jesse Segaro, small business owner, and I strongly oppose this bill.
My name is Harold Hernandez, I am co-president of the High Desert Chapter of SVADA. I'm also someone's child, I'd like to thank you for your concern of children, and I'd like to thank Electronic Cigarettes for the ability to see my grandchildren grow up. I strongly oppose this bill.
On behalf of 17 of my clients, we strongly oppose.
Itai Suas, I'm an ex-smoker, small business owner, a voter, and I hold a PhD from the University of California at Berkeley, and I strongly oppose this bill.
Josh Hart, ex-smoker, strongly oppose this bill.
James Lewis, small business owner out of Southern California, ex-smoker, taxpayer, job creator, only oppose this bill in its current form.
Wesley Brown, Abyss Vapor Solutions co-founder, I strongly oppose this bill.
Rolf Ginger, on behalf of Abyss Vapor Lounge, I strongly oppose.
Joey Samara on behalf of Vapor One in Walnut Creek, I strongly oppose.
Kelby Taylor, e-cigarette user and future business owner, on behalf of Vapers Everywhere, I strongly oppose.
Cyrus Malaxade, Apollo e-cigarettes, I strongly oppose.
Jeff Hess, co-owner of NorCal Vape, and we are not big tobacco, we are small business, and we strongly oppose.
Ryan Flores, owner of Heligood Vapors, strongly oppose.
I'm Sig Ramsey, War Tour Combat Bat, I started smoking in Iraq on my Loggawatch. Smoked for 20-plus years. Vaping was the only thing that got me to quit. I went through the VA cessation program, not once, twice. Zyban, I have PTSD. Zyban took me places mentally, I can't even relate. Don't even want you to understand where my brain went on Zyban. Zyban is a black-labeled drug.
We are not taking testimony.
Vaping saved my life. We don't sell the minors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nina Garcia, owner of Vapourium, and we oppose.
My name is Kao Kreis, on behalf of Subtle Innovations and Vape Safe USA, we strongly oppose this bill.
Erin Duncan on behalf of Calistim E Juice, we oppose this bill.
Reyna Garcia on behalf of Calistim E Liquid, we oppose this bill.
My name is Eric Bun, I'm representing It Is Vapor out of San Jose and Pradas Monta out of San Jose. Me, my customers, my mom, and dad, and grandma, all oppose this bill, Mr. Bun.
Julie Munoz on behalf of It Is Vapor 7, I oppose this bill.
John Harrington, owner of Craving Vapor, currently employing 50 skilled employees in Santa Clara County and Alameda County, strongly oppose this bill.
Jamie Kogelberg, and I strongly oppose this bill.
Karen Began, strongly oppose.
Rob Cook, Lost Coast Liquid, strongly oppose.
Lauren Ford on behalf of Calistim, and I oppose.
Andrew Wolfe, opposed to this legislation. Thank you.
David Quintana with Enjoy Corporation in opposition.
Is there any questions from any of the members? Senator Morello.
Are there any non-nicotine e-cigs?
It's a very reasonable question, Senator. One of the folks who just introduced himself says his particular product does not contain nicotine. Because it is an unregulated industry, we cannot tell what's in these products. There's no government agency that reviews them or determines what's in them. Many products that claim to be non-nicotine have been tested at University of California San Francisco, and nicotine was found in them. So, one could not answer your question honestly or well-informed because it's an unregulated industry.
And what is the FDA doing right now?
That's a good question, Senator. Thank you. So, the Food and Drug Administration for the past year or so has draft regulations. Of course, they have to allow for public comment, they've gotten an enormous amount, over a quarter million responses, and their website said that they were going to finalize their draft regulations by June of this year. It's now August. So, we expected any day, in the same Wall Street Journal article that said, "The study found that ninth graders who use e-cigarettes are four times more likely to smoke than those who do not," they have a quote in it from the FDA, reading from the Wall Street Journal of last week. An FDA spokesman said, "The agency is, quote, 'moving expeditiously to finalize the rule.'" He added that when it is finalized, it, quote, "will represent a significant first step in the agency's ability to effectively regulate these additional tobacco products and the public health burden of tobacco use in this country," unquote. So, we're on the same track as they are. We hope that they are just about to make their determination. Now, because they're the federal government, what it would mean is that, not unlike other tobacco products, they could not any longer be advertised on television, which they are right now, which is one of the reasons why our youth are buying into this so quickly because they're selling them in very, a lot of bling and attraction, and would not be allowed to advertise on billboards either, not unlike other tobacco products. So, there are additional ramifications to the federal government regulating e-cigarettes as tobacco products beyond what we would do if we are able to regulate them as tobacco products.
So, which should come first?
Well, this is not a game of waiting. California has already taken the lead. The California Department of Public Health has already invested some millions of dollars that come from tobacco tax money, for purposes of investing in tobacco cessation, and they have a very significant multimedia campaign currently underway. I'm not sure if you've seen any of the television commercials, but it warns people that there is risk here, and they should be better informed as to choices that they make. So, I don't think it makes sense for us to wait for them. In Washington, they may or may not. Clearly, 178 cities and counties in California have not waited for us, and they've taken matters into their own hands, as I said. Over half the state is already living under these regulations with e-cigarettes defined as tobacco products, and clearly, the industry is thriving.
Do any of the witnesses have any responses? Yes. Regarding the, it seemed like that was a really long answer to your question, which was, are there e-cigarettes and e-liquids out there that don't have nicotine in them? And the truth of the matter is, yes, yes, there are quite a bit, and a lot of the consumers and that I see in my stores are going, have started at a higher nicotine level, but now are currently using zero. So, there's manufacturers here in this room, and there's a lot of people here in this room. It doesn't act, nicotine doesn't accidentally fall into the e-liquid when it's made. It's a very controlled process, and a lot of consumers, especially now this year, are requesting zero, and it actually has the same effect as if it had nicotine in it. So, the answer is yes, and a lot of people are using zero.
And I'd like to address the FDA issue. The FDA is taking extra time because they are asking for input from the industry, they're asking for input from consumers, they're asking for scientists to come aboard and testify, and they're really taking a lot of time to review all of the evidence that's available instead of just cherry-picking studies that have been flagged in the news, but they're really taking extra time and care to make sure that they get this right. So, I would hate to see California make a move now that might interrupt their process.
So, if there are e-cigs with no nicotine, are they clearly identified, or is the comment that...
Yes, they are. Yeah, it's right on the bottle or on the cartridge. That comes, depending on what kind of kit you get, it's very clearly marked that there is no nicotine in there.
Then, Senator, is your bill strictly limited to nicotine, e-cigs, or e-cigs as a whole?
Again, Senator, it's an unregulated industry, so anyone can put anything on their label. There's no one confirming it. I'm not here to suggest anyone's acting implicitly. I'm just saying there's no oversight, there's no confirmation, and we do know for fact that products that have been labeled without nicotine have been determined by UCSF to have nicotine. So, should we pass this bill and agree with the FDA and the Centers for Disease Control and the California Department of Public Health and the World Health Organization that e-cigarettes are tobacco products, if we were to take that step? And if we then had manufacturers step forward to say, "Test our products, they don't have nicotine," we could deal with that then, but right now, it is unregulated, and we just have to take people at their word, and we know that word has not always been true.
Thank you, Mr. Q. Thank you, Mr. Q.
Senator Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the author, a couple of questions. Is there proof that the products being marketed to children under the names of Juicy Fruit, Gummy Bears, do those contain nicotine?
Again, I can't tell you what's in it. We know there's formaldehyde in, from studies, we know, we know that there are a variety of chemicals, but again, because it is unregulated, we can't be sure what's in it.
So, there's currently no prohibition against including nicotine in e-cigarettes that are marketed to children?
No e-cigarettes can legally be sold to children, but we do know for fact, as you've heard from the testimony, all the children's flavors, they are being marketed to children, and no one is suggesting that they are nicotine-free.
If your bill becomes law, and e-cigarettes are controlled as a tobacco product, is there anything in your bill that would prevent an adult who seeks to use an e-cigarette to be an aid in ceasing use of combustible smoking products from using an e-device?
Absolutely not. This is about protecting children, all the people here who claim that their lives have been saved from e-cigarettes, I'm not arguing with them. Bless their hearts, I'm glad that they're not smoking traditional cigarettes, but they are still, in most cases, getting a nicotine addiction fix, but through vaping rather than smoking. But this bill will not touch them one bit.
And there's nothing in this bill that would close the businesses selling those products to adults?
No, and that's not just my suggestion or conjecture. Over half of the population of the state of California is living with this kind of regulation at the local level, and the industry is growing exponentially every year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? None? Is there a motion? Motion by Senator Hall. Would you like to close, Senator? Again, I appreciate all the time, I appreciate the good questioning. I think that there is every opportunity for our support of this bill, to see it become law, and for the fears that have been whipped up into many who are here today, to realize that they will not be realized, that their businesses will not be impacted, their employees will not be cut back, their ability to access e-cigarette products will not be harmed or challenged in one way. Most people didn't identify themselves at public comment, but a number of people said they were from Southern California. I can tell you that among California cities that already have these regulations in place at the local level include Santa Monica, Long Beach, Los Angeles, San Diego, Temecula, Riverside, Palmdale, we also heard High Desert. So, that encompasses a lot of Southern California. I would imagine many of the people who are here today already have these laws at the local level, and their business is not impacted, their ability to use their e-cigarette products have not been impacted. So, again, I ask for a vote. Thank you, Senator Leno. I will be supporting the bill. This is item number one, SB 5, extraordinary session, X2. Do pass two appropriations. I don't know if you have amendments or not. Just the one to change, and I don't know if we need to do this here or in appropriations. The suggested amendment was that we change child proof to child resistance, and I think that's a good idea. And do pass appropriations. Call the members, please.
Hernandez, aye. Morel, no. Anderson, bell, bell, aye. Hall, aye. Leno, aye. Leno, aye. McGuire, aye. McGuire, aye. Mitchell, aye. Munning, aye. Morlock, no. Nielsen, aye. Pan, aye. Walk, aye.
Currently has eight. It's enough to get out, but we're going to put that bill on call. We have some members absent. We're going to move on to item number two, SB 6, extraordinary session two, Senator Manning, smoking in the workplace. If you don't mind, I think there's quite a few people that were here for the last bill, unless they're going to stay, we'll wait till the room clears. It's a couple of minutes. Okay, Senator, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. Before I begin, I'd like to clarify that I will be amending the bill to restore the existing exemptions for retail tobacco shops and private lounges. I understand that those amendments will need to be taken in the next fiscal committee hearing, assuming the bill passes today. I'm here to present Senate Bill 6 in the second extraordinary session, which will close many of the existing loopholes in California's smoke-free workplace law. This landmark law was passed by the legislature in 1994 and provided the nation's first employee protections against exposure to secondhand smoke, the effects of which can lead to severe health conditions such as heart disease, stroke, lung cancer, and serious respiratory diseases. Now, more than 20 years later, many Californians are still forced to work in employment settings where they are subjected to secondhand smoke exposure due to a number of exemptions built into the original legislation. into the original legislation. California Department of Public Health estimates that these exemptions currently allow for one in seven employees in California to work in a place of business where they could be exposed to secondhand smoke. It is unconscionable that we allow many Californians to enjoy safe and smoke-free workplace conditions while others are continuously exposed to harmful secondhand smoke. SB 26 will remove many of the existing loopholes in California's smoke-free workplace law and prohibit smoking in owner-operated businesses, employee break rooms, warehouse facilities, hotel lobbies, meeting and banquet rooms, and businesses where there are fewer than five employees. I ask that you join me in ensuring that all Californians can work in an employment setting that is free from the dangers of secondhand smoke by voting aye on SB 26. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chair members, for your time, and now turn over to witnesses in support of the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Callahan. On behalf of the American Heart and American Stroke Association and strong support of this bill to eliminate loopholes in current law, there's overwhelming scientific evidence that secondhand smoke is a direct cause of heart disease, the number-one killer of both men and women in California. U.S. Surgeon General's report in 2006 found that brief exposure to secondhand smoke can have an immediate adverse effect on one's cardiovascular system and health. Smoking costs the state of California $23 billion in both health costs and lost productivity. $3.5 billion out of this total is directly linked to Medi-Cal. Last year, 43,000 Californians lost their lives to tobacco-related disease and illness. Once the nation's leader in protecting workers from the deadly effects of secondhand smoke, California has fallen behind the national standard set by the CDC. It is not considered a 100% smoke-free state. Twenty-six other states, including the District of Columbia, already provide greater secondhand smoke protection in the workplace in California. As Senator Moning previously mentioned, one in seven workers report being exposed to secondhand smoke, and of that, low-income workers, young adults, and Latinos are more likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke at work. Exposure to secondhand smoke should not be a condition of one's employment. It is time for California to catch up with the rest of the nation. Every Californian deserves to work in a healthy environment and should not have to make a choice between a good job or good health. We have the opportunity to do that here today, and I respectfully urge your aye vote on this measure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Senators, Terry Brennan on behalf of SEIU California. I can't imagine needing three minutes to talk about this bill. No one should have to, as a condition of their job, risk their health and risk their lives. Most of the people impacted by these loopholes are low-wage workers of color, and we urge your aye vote.
Mr. Chair members, Sarah Phlox, California Labor Federation, we supported the original law in 1994 to protect worker health and safety. And since then, California, once a leader has fallen behind, I'd like to agree with my colleague from SEIU's comments, it is very easy for employers to exploit the owner-operator loophole, saying that some of their workers are actually vice presidents or co-owners, especially in low-wage service occupations in restaurants and in bars. We think it is very important to close this loophole, to bring California once again to being a leader in protecting worker health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in support? Please state your name and position.
Lindsey Freitas with the American Lung Association in California and strong support.
Kimberly Chen with the California Pan-Ethnic Health Network in support.
Jasmine Gordon with the California Black Health Network in support.
The Terry Jeffy, California Chronic Care Coalition in support.
Rebecca De La Rosa with the Latino Coalition for a Healthy Californian, strong support.
Lydia Bourne, American Academy of Pediatrics in support.
Alicia Sanchez representing the California Medical Association in support.
Judith Regal on behalf of the County Health Executives Association in support.
Gregory Kramer on behalf of Planned Parenthood Affiliates of California in support.
Kelly Beam on behalf of March of Dines in support.
Megan O'Redham on behalf of the California Dental Association in support.
Soi Tseum on behalf of Health Access California in support.
Fred Knower on behalf of the Association of Northern Californian Oncologists and the Medical Oncology Association of Southern Californians in support.
Alexis Fernandez on behalf of the First Five Association in support.
Tim Gibbs, American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network in support.
Sean South on behalf of the California Primary Care Association in support.
Dr. Donald Lyman with the California Academy of Preventive Medicine in support.
Any opposition to the measure? Any questions or comments from any of the members?
Yes.
Senator Hall.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Does this also include gaming clubs? So some of the gaming clubs, if they're part of an Indian compact, they're not affected by this because they're sovereign nations, and they develop their own rules and regulations. And what about the card clubs? Those, I believe, are already subject to, that's not a new addition, they're already under the prohibition. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments from any of the members? Is there a motion? Motion by Senator Pan. Would you like to close?
Just briefly, glad to be part of this suite of bills to build on the Health Foundation that California has led the nation. The time is appropriate to move forward. There's minimal costs associated with this legislation and maximal health benefits. I urge your aye vote.
Thank you. This is item number two, SB 6, second extraordinary session. Chairs recommend support. Do pass appropriations. Call the members.
Hernandez. Hernandez, aye. Morell? Anderson? Anderson? Bell? Bell, aye. Hall? Hall, aye. Leno? Leno, aye. McGuire? McGuire, aye. Mitchell? Munning? Munning? Munning, aye. Morlock? Morlock, no. Nielsen? Pan? Pan? Pan, aye. Wolk? Wolk, aye.
Current vote count is eight to one. Enough to get out, but we're going to still keep that bill on call. We're going to move to item number five, SB 9, second extraordinary session, McGuire? Local taxes, authorization, cigarettes, and tobacco products.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity, and good afternoon, members. Tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of death and disease in California and throughout this great country. Nationally, one out of every five deaths is attributable to smoking. Here in the Golden State, that adds up to nearly 40,000 residents every year passing away from smoking-related diseases. There are many different ways Californians can suppress this deadly habit, but time and time again, according to all of the leading experts, price point for a pack of cigarettes, chewing tobacco, and other tobacco-related products is widely recognized as the most effective way to reduce smoking, especially among young people. In fact, according to the American Cancer Society and multiple studies that they have produced, for every 10% increase in the price of cigarettes, there is a 4% reduction in overall cigarette consumption and a 6.5% reduction in youth consumption. It's clear, price point moves the needle towards a healthier California. It has been 16 years since California last raised its tobacco tax, and during that time, we've seen our state's cost of providing health care for those inflicted with a tobacco-related disease increase significantly. According to the Center for Disease Control, smoking-related diseases cost California nearly $13.29 billion in medical expenses every year, and the cost of lost worker productivity to tobacco use is $10.35 billion annually. An average California's family tax burden from smoking-caused, tax burden from smoking-caused government expenditures is $745 per household, and paying for these health costs is a form of subsidized medicine for tobacco users. The fact is this, California has one of the lowest tobacco taxes in the nation, currently ranking 35th in the nation with a tax of 87 cents per pack. The national average state tobacco tax is a buck 60 per pack. New York is the highest at $4.35 per pack. Even Texas, Texas has a higher tobacco tax at a buck 41. If you go to Montana, you're spending $1.70. While disease caused by tobacco has tremendous impacts on the lives of families and communities across the state, it also has significant financial implications for state and local budgets. Treatment of cancer, heart disease, strokes, lung disease, diabetes, and other diseases related to tobacco continues to impose a significant burden on California's overstressed healthcare system. Moreover, smoking disproportionately affects low-income communities in California. For example, African-American men and women have the highest adult smoking rates in the state, between 17 and 23%. The lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community smokes at the highest rate, 27.4%. Additionally, pregnant women still smoke at a rate over 8% in California. Smoking prevalence is higher among those who are younger, have lower incomes, and are either on Medicaid or have no health insurance. All of this leads to additional local government financial obligations and increased challenges for those segments of our population that are most vulnerable. Nationally, over 600 local jurisdictions have their own cigarette and/or tobacco taxes. Unfortunately, here in California, no local cities or counties have a health-related tax related to tobacco products because it's currently prohibited by law. As a footnote, these 600 non-Californian local jurisdictions across the country generate more than $430 million in annual revenue that directly benefits smoking rate suppression programming, especially among youth, and these dollars are invested at the local level in services that focuses on decreasing smoking-caused diseases and death. I got to say, and I think a lot of us are, big believers in local control. And it makes sense to allow counties, who in many cases, throughout California, are the ones who are delivering healthcare services through hospital and community health center contracts, to invest in local smoking suppression programming that will help Californians kick this deadly habit. Or, as what we see with every study, or stop kids from starting using tobacco in the first place. This bill is simple. It allows counties to place a local tax initiative onto their ballot and to let voters decide to impose a tobacco-related tax. Or not. By raising local cigarette and tobacco taxes, counties would have the resources to implement tobacco prevention and health programs and target those dollars in the neighborhoods of greatest needs. We should let those decisions be up to those who are on the county boards, the supervisors who know their neighborhoods. Local control of tobacco taxes is a critical tool in allowing communities to set public health priorities that can better meet the needs of its residents. Those folks on the local level know what works best because they're on the ground, doing the work day in and day out. Finally, Mr. Chair, tobacco tax revenues can help California counties take advantage of new federal matching funds available under the Affordable Care Act to improve the health system on which we all rely. We are currently working with this committee, and I want to say thank you so much to the chair and to the amazing committee staff and the Board of Equalization to work out all the technical details. I will say, while we are studying several options, one option that is not being studied is a local retail tax. We're going to continue working with the committee and our incredible partners in the Assembly and the Coalition to iron out the details of this important initiative over the next two weeks. Again, Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Anyone like to speak in support of the measure? Please proceed.
I'm Lindsey Freitas with the American Lung Association in California, and we're here in strong support of the bill. This bill will prevent kids from smoking, improve public health, and generate local revenue. Nearly 40,000 Californians die each year from tobacco-related illness, and smoking, as the senator mentioned, is the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, killing more people than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. The surgeon general projects that without further action, 5.6 million youth aged 0 to 17 alive today will die prematurely from tobacco use. And tobacco taxes, whether at the state, federal, or local level, have been proven to be one of the most effective ways to reduce smoking and improve public health outcomes, particularly in low-income and minority communities. This is because for every 10% increase in the price of cigarettes, there's a 4% reduction in overall cigarette consumption and a 6.5% reduction in youth consumption. In California, we currently have over 21,000 youth who start smoking every year, and by allowing counties to tax tobacco, they can take a step to ensure that some of those kids never start smoking and lower that number. Not only will this bill allow counties the opportunity to save lives, but also money. This bill will give counties a chance to pass a tax that will ultimately save millions of dollars. Overall, tobacco-related disease costs Medi-Cal $3.5 billion a year in direct expenses, and tobacco use inflicts a terrible financial toll on our state as a whole. It costs California roughly $13.2 billion in total medical expenses each year and $10.3 billion in lost productivity and wages. On average, a California family's tax burden from smoking-caused government expenditures is $745 per household, and on a county-based basis, that cost varies from $374 per resident in Orange County all the way up to over $1,000 per resident in Lake County. And the total costs vary from around $300,000 total in Alpine County to a total of $4.4 billion to the County of Los Angeles yearly. All of these associated costs will decrease as the number of people smoking decreases, and allowing counties to take this effective step to improve health and address some of these costs associated with tobacco will benefit the state as a whole. For these reasons, I respectfully request your support of this bill and to give counties one more tool in their arsenal to fight back against tobacco.
Good afternoon. Tim Gibbs with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and we support this legislation because we think that local communities should be given a choice when it comes to going beyond state law to protect their citizens from the deadly effects of tobacco use. Allowing counties the ability to give voters a choice on whether a higher tax makes sense for their community is the essence of local control. One of the most pernicious tactics that the tobacco companies use in order to sign legislation and ensure that no policies passed that result in fewer people smoking is to preempt local governments from passing tobacco control legislation. Their modus operandi is to pass a weak law at the state level where they yield more power and then prevent the locals from improving on that weak policy. For the most part, California has a long history of resisting the tobacco companies' attempts to preempt local efforts to reduce smoking. The reason we were able to pass the nation's first smoke-free workplace law was because local efforts made that happen. Local communities had the ability to decide for themselves whether or not they wanted to protect workers from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. Across the state, communities acted, which eventually led to the state enacting a minimum standard for smoke-free workplaces. Many communities have chosen beyond, go beyond the minimum standard that the state has set. We've also resisted local preemption for local licensing ordinances, and those licensing ordinances have given law enforcement the ability to enforce youth access laws. Unfortunately, the one area where the tobacco companies have been successful in preventing local communities from protecting their citizens has been in the realm of tobacco taxes. Nearly 50 years ago, California decided not to allow counties the ability to levy tobacco taxes. With more than 600 jurisdictions across the country that can levy their own tobacco taxes, we want to give our 58 counties the ability to decide for themselves. This is not a vote about raising tobacco taxes. This is a vote about establishing local control and stopping the tobacco companies from preempting counties from reducing smoking. We hope that you agree that counties deserve to decide for themselves, and we respectfully ask for your aye vote.
Kimberly Chen with the California Pan-Ethnic Health Network in support. Tobacco industry targets specifically communities of color. This provides a tool for the locals to push back against those tactics.
Thank you. Anyone else in support? State your name and position.
Jasmine Gordon on behalf of the California Black Health Network in strong support.
Soi Tseum on behalf of Health Access California, we are in support.
Alicia Sanchez representing the California Medical Association, and our colleague from the California Society of Addiction Medicine had to step out of the room but wanted their support recorded as well.
Karen Lang on behalf of the Solano County Board of Supervisors and the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors in support.
City Bourne representing American Academy of Pediatrics in support.
Terry Jeffy representing California Chronic Care Coalition in support.
Gregory Kramer on behalf of Planned Parenthood Affiliates of California in support.
Megan Allred on behalf of the California Dental Association in support.
Kula Konig with the American Heart Association, American Shook Association, proud co-sponsors of this bill.
Kelly Beam on behalf of March of Dimes in support.
Carrie Brennan on behalf of FCIU California in support.
Fred Knowher on behalf of Organized Oncology in support.
Alexis Fernandez on behalf of the First Five Association in support.
Dr. Donald Lyman, California Academy of Preventive Medicine in support.
Jesus again. I support this bill, but honestly, vaping's gonna help a lot better than taxation will. As a teacher, I just know.
Any opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members, Dennis Low, President of the California Distributors Association. We are the taxpayers. As this bill says, for the privilege of distributing tobacco products, you will be taxed. Fifty years ago, it's correct. In nineteen sixty-seven, the law was changed. And the law was changed because during the time before that, from fifty-nine to sixty-seven, local entities had the right to tax. And frankly, particularly in Los Angeles County, it was chaos. There was more bootlegging and problems with smuggling at that time than any other time in the history of California tobacco taxation. Again, it's been tried and tested, and it didn't work. We will have jurisdictions all over the state that will have to have different rates and taxes. Retailers will, across the street from each other, have different rates and taxes depending whether they're in the incorporated part of the county or unincorporated part of the county. It doesn't make sense. It makes sense for taxation purposes that they be held statewide, and for those reasons we oppose.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Can we turn your mic on? Get her mic on.
For the California Chamber of Commerce in opposition.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members. Dean Houghton with the California Grocers Association in opposition.
Peter Blocker, California Taxpayer Association, oppose.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Any questions from any of the members? Senator Morlock?
Senator McGuire, I'm sort of baffled because we've seen this before. In the mid-nineties, a young man by the name of Michael Moore became the Attorney General for the state of Mississippi, and he sued the tobacco companies, and it resulted in a national tobacco settlement. And it gave most of the fifty states a revenue stream from the sale of tobacco, and it actually gave a couple of states, including California, gave all fifty-eight counties a portion of that revenue. So, in Orange County, we fought over how to use that money, cessation, or for debt retirement, or for coalition of community clinics. We built a plan on what to do with that funding. I think the state of California decided to take the money and securitize it and pay for one of Gray Davis's annual budget deficits. So, we didn't do anything at the state level with that money, which made Mr. Moore a little upset. He was portrayed by Russell Crowe in the movie The Insider, which was all about the national tobacco settlement. So, I'm just wondering, have you done any analysis of what the fifty-eight counties are doing with the national tobacco settlement revenues? Are they getting ready to deal with cessation and health and all the rest? Because this would be an add-on.
Well, so what we currently have is an eighty-seven cents per pack distributor tax here in California. As far as the tobacco tax settlement, it was dependent on each county on how they want to be able to spend those dollars, as you know. And I was also a former county board, a member of the county board of supervisors. But what I can tell you is this, it costs the average household here in California with unreimbursed care about seven hundred and forty-five bucks per year for tobacco-related disease in California. And this is with the tobacco settlement as well as the eighty-seven cents per pack. We're the largest state in the Union with one of the lowest per pack distributor packs in the Union as well. And what I can tell you is, we have healthcare costs in the billions, and why not give voters a choice? This is simply a choice. I'm not gonna stand in front of you here today to tell you what's best for Orange County or Modoc County. But I am gonna stand out and say, let's give voters a choice. And if they want to keep those dollars local, to be able to fight those diseases that are in their county, so be it. And it will help local health centers as well as local hospitals as well. So, that's where I'm focused. I can't comment on how Governor Davis spent the dollars, but what I can say is, I do think that we owe it to our counties to give them a choice. And by the way, they're on the front lines of this issue. They are the deliverer of state services as well as healthcare.
So, what about the rule of unintended consequences? Where one county votes to increase the tax on cigarettes, and you live close to the border like I do, and you could drive to LA County and purchase in bulk there, or what? Who would there be? You're trying to reduce the use of tobaccos, you're raising the tax, trying to reduce it. So, you're not, at the end of the day, how do you net money to do any cessation?
Well, it's gonna ultimately be up to the county. So, I know that Orange County is very much pro-tax. So, what I would hope is that the Orange County Board of Supervisors would be able to advance tobacco-related distributor tax that could be implemented in the county to ensure that it doesn't become an island and a destination for tobacco users. So, I would hope that, gonna be able to work together as regional governments to be able to advance this. It has worked, by the way. We're not reinventing the wheel. We are looking at six hundred other local jurisdictions across this Union that have developed successful systems. I live in a community that has advanced twenty-one or over for tobacco products. And it is important that our local governments are able to take a stand. And by the way, local governments oftentimes are able to move much quicker than what state and federal governments are able to do. So, I actually believe we're gonna see more change on a local level at a quicker clip than we will here at the state or on the federal government level as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Bell?
Just, you know, he's talking about history. The tobacco settlement was a great victory that was led by the County of Santa Clara, County Council Ann Ravel, and the County of San Francisco's Louise Rennie. And the settlement was awarded to the counties and the cities. And in our county, we decided to be the first county to ensure all children. So, the money was spent to ensure, or the majority of the money was spent to ensure all children in Santa Clara County. We started our Children's Healthcare Initiative. And I think what happened was, after that, twenty-six counties did a similar thing with the tobacco settlement. Without the tobacco settlement, we would have had the Children's Healthcare Initiatives because that money was used to fund insurance for all kids. And so, it was a great victory, and I'm quite proud of that effort that we did in 2001. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Senator Leno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator McGuire, I think that Senator Morlock's question is a thoughtful one, and there's actually a term for it. I came to learn of it when I authored a bill, which took about six years to get signed into law, which allows San Francisco to be able, as a county, to be able to increase its own vehicle license fee up to the original two dollars. That, two percent, excuse me, that was the original state VLF until the late nineteen nineties. And there was concern, would people register their vehicles outside of the county and try and game the system? And so, the term is called leakage. Would there be leakage? But as Senator McGuire points out, this already exists in hundreds and hundreds of cities and counties around the country. And if leakage were such a serious problem, I would imagine that they would be reversing them. But I was going to ask you, do you know how long? Because I know that New York City and Chicago have some of the highest local. Do you know when their states gave them their authority, or they just had it as we used to have?
I don't have it at my fingertips at the moment, but I will definitely get back to you on that in regards to...
So, it's a reasonable concern, but I think we don't have to conjecture as to what happens. We know what happens, and it's just not that serious. And in fact, as the analysis points out, San Francisco has a twenty cent per pack cigarette litter abatement fee, and that raises some millions of dollars each year for the sitting county of San Francisco to use for litter abatement that comes from cigarettes. And I don't know that we've experienced any leakage over that twenty cents per pack. And just to follow my comments, I think the strongest argument for this, aside from local control, which I think is a significant one, is that the healthcare costs are borne at the local level. And so, for us, the state, to tell locals, you can't, let your own voters decide how to raise money to deal with their own health issues, just seems a bit imperious. And we often talk about, why is California dictating to locals? Well, here's an opportunity for us to say, let my people go, local control, voters' determination. Absolutely. Thank you. I move the bill.
Thank you, Senator. Seen no other questions, comments? We have a motion by Senator Leno. Would you like to close?
Thank you so much. And Senator Leno does bring up a really good point in regards to San Francisco. This bill would also respect, and San Francisco is the only sitting county, so it would respect the twenty cents. So, thank you so much, Mr. Hall. Hot day. And I'll just end it with this, today's decision is about choice, the choice to move the needle in neighborhoods, and would greatly appreciate your support. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
The Chair is recommending an aye.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. May I ask one more question?
I will allow it.
As long as Mr. Hall's okay. Hot day. There we go. Hot day. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for my clarification, is this something that the board of supervisors would vote on and approve themselves, or are they voting to put it on a ballot, or the voters would approve it?
They would need to vote to put it onto a ballot, and then the voters would ultimately decide. Does not give...
Where's that in the bill?
Let me grab it.
Yeah, so it's just inferred that it would, yeah, okay.
Oh, there we go.
Great, then I've got that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator McGuire.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to clarify, under existing law, it's my understanding that local governments have to be able to put that forward. So, this would not allow board of supervisors to be able to advance it themselves. It would allow them to put it under the ballot and ultimately have the voters decide.
It was unclear in mind.
That means you're gonna vote for it now, right?
You never know. Why don't you just call the roll?
Hey, there you go.
Item number five, SB nine, special section, session two. Leno moved the bill. Do pass. Call the members.
Hernandez, 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 aye. Morel? Morel, no. Anderson? Anderson. Bell? Bell? Bell, aye. Hall? Hall, aye. Leno? Leno, aye. McGuire? McGuire, aye. Mitchell? Monning? Monning, aye. Morelak? Nielsen? Nielsen? Nielsen, no. Pan? Pan? Pan, aye. Wolk? Wolk, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Currently has eight, enough to get out. We have a member, I believe, or two members apps, and we'll put that bill on call. Item number six, SB ten, X two. Senator Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present this bill before this committee regarding the Board of Equalization tobacco licensing. Just to give you a background, in 2003, we enacted in California the Cigarette Tobacco Products Licensing Act. This established a statewide licensing program administered by the Board of Equalization. The act was established to reduce untaxed distribution and illegal sales of cigarettes and tobacco products. Under the act, tobacco retailers must pay a one-time fee of a hundred bucks for each location that sells tobaccos, products, and cigarettes. The license is valid for one year, it must be renewed annually with no additional charge to renew a license. So, they have to renew it annually, but they don't get charged for the renewal. Tobacco distributors and wholesalers instead pay an annual licensing fee of a thousand dollars. Current licensing fee structure does not generate necessary revenue to cover the administrative costs associated with licensing. Of course not. Of course not. It's a one-time fee, it's an annual license. They have programs to fight illegal sales of tobacco, but they only have a one-time fee. So, what happens is, the LAO and the BOE have published these reports that outline inadequate funding. The reports highlight the inadequate funding of this program that can lead to a lack of field enforcement or the reduction of compliance debt, potentially leading to further decreases in funding. So, what's happened is, to make up this shortfall, this shortfall because we only have one-time fee and ongoing expenses, what they did is, they take money out of special funds for childhood development, tobacco education, prevention, tobacco-related research, and healthcare for low-income persons, among others, and are charging these programs the cost, part of the cost of administering the licensing program to make up the deficit. To remedy this problem, this bill will eliminate the need to divert this tobacco excise taxes from these intended purposes. To pay for the deficits by replacing a one-time fee with a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-dollar ongoing fee, and increase the tobacco wholesalers and distributors' fee from a thousand dollars to twelve-hundred dollars. And that's it. I thank you for your support. It's pretty cut and dried. You understand it, and that's the bill. That's the bill.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in support of the measure?
It's about a seven billion-dollar-year deficit, something like that, seven million.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Kula Konig with the American Heart Association, American Shook Association. We are in strong support of this bill because it addresses a problem that has existed for far too long, as Senator Bell mentioned. The Board of Equalization does not have adequate funding to cover the costs of running the tobacco licensing program. The report he mentioned to the LAO office stated that from 2005 to 2014, annual expenditures averaged seven million dollars more than the annual fee revenues. That's a deficit they were running. The report noted that for the 2013 to 2014 year, it costs approximately ten million dollars to run the program, and revenues remain stagnant around two million dollars. So, by adjusting the fee, we would generate approximately twelve million dollars and thus equip the BOE with the resources it needs to prevent untaxed distribution, an illegal sale of cigarettes, and tobacco. The BOE has stated that without proper resources, the organization would have a difficult time discouraging tax evasion. They also noted that lack of the ability to force, could jeopardize the California Master of Settlement Agreement payments if it's determined that California is not diligently enforcing its cigarette and tobacco product statutes. The bill simply asks tobacco retailers, wholesalers, and distributors to pay for the costs of doing business in the state. According to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, other licenses such as the state liquor license for stores that sell beer, wine, and spirits have an origination fee of thirteen thousand dollars and an annual renewal fee of five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. This is fair and sensible public policy, and I ask for your a vote.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members. Autumn Ogden with American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. We are proud in support of SB ten. We believe this will provide critical funding for the Board of Equalization to adequately administer the cigarette licensing program. In 2006, in response to the budget deficit of approximately seven million dollars, the legislature approved a budget proposal allowing the BOE to fill in their funding gap by siphoning funds from four other funding sources, the General Fund, the Breast Cancer Fund, Prop Ten, which funds First Five, and Prop Ninety-Nine, which funds the tobacco control program. The money being diverted funds other critical programs which support tobacco education and prevention, tobacco-related disease research, healthcare for low-income persons, and childhood development. The tobacco control program, for example, is already underfunded and only receiving seventeen percent of the funding recommended by the CDC. By allowing the BOE to divert... By allowing the BOE to divert tobacco excise tax revenue to cover their shortfall, we deplete life-saving programs of critical funding. Furthermore, funding from these programs through Prop ninety-nine and Prop ten raises questions of legality, as the voters never approved these funds to be used towards this program. By revising the Cigarette and Tobacco Products Licensing Act of 2003, to increase licensing fees, the BOE will be able to cover the costs of these programs without having to pillage funding from other critical programs that are already suffering. For these reasons, we ask for your support.
Thank you. Name and position, please.
Erin Gable on behalf of First Five California in strong support of this appropriate funding source for tobacco control and regulation. Thank you.
Jerry Cheffey representing the California Chronic Care Coalition in support.
Gregory Kramer on behalf of Planned Parenthood Affiliates of California in support.
Jasmine Gordon with the California Black Health Network in support.
Alexis Fernandez on behalf of the First Five Association. Our commissions are carrying the burden of covering these costs.
Kimberly Chen with the California Panethnic Health Network in support.
So I assume, Health Access California in support.
Megan Allred, California Dental Association in support.
Alicia Sanchez representing the California Medical Association in support and also helping the California Society for Addiction Medicine in their support.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members. Fred Knower representing the Medical Oncology Association in support.
Kelly Beam on behalf of March of Dimes in support.
City of Born American Academy of Pediatrics in support.
Lindsay Freitas, American Lung Association in California in support.
Dr. Donald Lyman, California Academy of Preventive Medicine in support.
Kerry Brennan, SEIU California in support.
Thank you. Opposition? Questions? Comments? Many of the members? Questions, Senator Morello?
I'm just curious, Senator Bell, if we eliminated the fee altogether and didn't have to collect it, we would save $7 million?
Yeah, that's true, except then you allowed all the cheaters and thieves to run amok in California, so we won't have any enforcement. So they'd be able to sell cigarettes to minors and do all those kinds of things without the enforcement. So that's why, that's why we have this enforcement program. So, you know, we can deregulate, we can do that, but then there's nobody to catch the bad guys. We need to have more than a 25%, 30% cost recovery on these things, so...
What does the ATF do? They're doing excise tax as well. Have we ever thought of doing a relationship with them where we pay them to collect our fees?
Yeah, they're involved in that, but I think the Board of Equalization is the tax collector, and I think you've got to realize they're the direct responsible party in the legislation that we have. So if we're going to have a law, we should enforce it.
Right. If we ask the state board of equalization to contract with the federal government, we could reduce their costs.
I introduce a bill. Let's look at it.
No, I'm just asking.
You know, that's an idea, but for now, I think we ought to approve this, so at least for cost recovery.
All right. All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Senator Pan. Seeing no other questions? Item number six, chair is recommending an aye. Do pass to appropriations. Call the members, please.
Hernandez.
Hernandez.
Hernandez, aye.
Morel?
Anderson.
Anderson.
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Bell, aye.
Hall?
Hall, aye.
Leno?
Leno, aye.
Maguire?
Maguire, aye.
Mitchell?
Monning?
Monning?
Monning, aye.
Monning, aye.
Morlock?
No.
No.
Morlock, no.
Nielsen?
Nielsen?
Nielsen, no.
Nielsen, no.
Pan?
Pan?
Pan, aye.
Pan, aye.
Wolk?
Wolk, aye.
Wolk, aye.
Currently has eight, enough to get out. We will place that bill on call. We have some absent members. We're going to move on to item number three, SB seven, Hernandez.
Yeah, I just don't have the...
If the clerk could help me out, could I read the... This is going to be SB X two hyphen seven by Hernandez, and we are honored to have the Senator present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members. The truth, as Harry Waxman once stated, is that cigarettes are the single most dangerous consumer products ever sold in this country. This bill would increase the tobacco purchase age to 21. And you would ask the question, but why? Tobacco remains the leading cause of preventable death and kills 480,000 individuals in the United States, 34,000 in California. Tobacco use kills more individuals per year than alcohol, murder, illegal drugs, AIDS, and motor vehicle accidents, according to the CDC. Additionally, it is estimated that 90 percent of lifetime users start before the age of 21, and 80 percent first experience before age 18, often furnished through illegal or illegal sales. If the vast human toll was not reason enough, there is also significant financial cost related to tobacco use. In 2009, a UCSF study estimated tobacco use costs Californians $18.1 billion, more than half from direct healthcare expenditures. It is estimated that Medi-Cal spends $3.5 billion annually in healthcare costs attributed to the use of tobacco. At a time when Californians are concerned with growing healthcare expenditures, this bill has enormous potential to substantially reduce tobacco use, which in turn would have large impact on health costs, both on individuals and in the state of California. Will this work? Well, the institution of medicine, in an FDA Commission report to Congress, recently reported that increasing the age to 21 would result in a 12 percent additional decline in tobacco prevalence and 250,000 fewer premature deaths for those born between 2000 and 2019. It should not be so easy for our children to get a hold of this deadly drug. The time is to act now. This bill provides a new solution to combat the continued use of this poisonous and ultimately deadly product. I have witnesses with me that like to speak in support, and I respectfully ask for an aye vote, Mr. Chair and members.
Witnesses in support.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. My name's Callie Hampton, and I'm here on behalf of the American Heart and American Stroke Association, proud cosponsor of this bill. Smoking is the number one cause of preventable death and disease in the country and in California. Last year, 43,000 Californians lost their lives to this deadly addiction. In addition, it costs the state, and direct cost to Medi-Cal of over $3.5 billion alone. Every year, 21,000 California's children start smoking, which equates to 45.4 million packs of cigarettes being bought or smoked by kids. In fact, national data shows that 95 percent of adult smokers begin smoking before they turn 21. This is a problem and desperate need of a solution. As the Senator mentioned before, the IOM report found that increasing the minimum age of sale for tobacco products could benefit public health by reducing tobacco use. The report also found that tobacco use would decrease by 12 percent by the time today's teenagers were adults if the minimum age of sale were increased to 21. The science is very clear. Increasing the legal minimum purchase age of tobacco is good for our economy and good for our health and good for our communities. In July, Hawaii raised their legal minimum purchase age of tobacco products to 21, and in California, Healdsburg and Santa Clara County currently do the same. More than 80 communities in seven different states have raised their tobacco sales age to 21. Other states have minimum purchase ages that are different than 18. They include Alaska, Alabama, Utah, and New Jersey. California is a rich history of strong tobacco control policies that have helped reduce smoking rates. Increasing the age of sale of tobacco, combined with other tobacco control measures before you today, will help to further reduce smoking rates in California and will reduce tobacco-related illness costs in Medi-Cal and save thousands of lives. We ask for your aye vote today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Donald Lyman, representing the California Medical Association. Recently retired from state service where I was your senior civil service physician in the Department of Public Health. One of my responsibilities was starting and operating the tobacco control program. We were quite successful. We have now reduced the adult smoking rate by about 50 percent, from about 22 percent down to about 11 or 12 percent. Concurrently, the decreases in cancer rates are substantial, the decreases in heart disease rates are substantial. It is a wonderful success. The legislature has mandated us to reduce that adult smoking rate to 7 percent. We're at 11 to 12 now. We've got to get it down to 7 because you told us to do that. What we're looking for are now high-risk populations, which we can address, which can drive that smoking rate down. This age group is a very attractive target for that activity. The tobacco industry agrees. They have preferentially directed their marketing efforts to this age group, and they put lots of money into it. And there are two good reasons for that. The first is that this is the group which can now legally purchase tobacco, which is at the highest risk of addiction. So when this age group smokes, their likelihood of going on to addiction is the highest of all people who can legally buy tobacco. The only group that's higher is teenagers, and they're now prohibited from buying tobacco. So this is a group which is at high risk of future addiction, lifetime purchasers of tobacco, if they can get them to try those tobacco products. That high addiction rate platos out at about the age of 25, and then stays low and fairly low for the rest of a person's life. So that's number one reason for them to attack this group. The other is that this is the portal for tobacco to the younger people, to people under the age of 18. These are their friends from high school and elsewhere. The tobacco these people get comes through their friends who are in this age group. It is a very dangerous situation for those children. And for those two reasons, we are very anxious about this group, and we're very hopeful that we can raise the age, and in that act, move us closer to the 7 percent adult prevalence that you've asked us to reach. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair members, Tim Madden representing the California Chapter of the American College of Cardiology and the California Chapter of the American College of Emergency Physicians in strong support.
Other witnesses in support?
And Terry Cheffey representing the California Chronic Care Coalition in support.
Teresa Stark on behalf of Kaiser Permanente in support.
Kerry Brennan, SEIU California in support.
Kelly Brooks on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Clara County and the Association of California Healthcare Districts in support.
Jasmine Gordon on behalf of the California Black Health Network in support.
Kimberly Chen with the California Panethnic Health Network in support.
Tim Gibbs, American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, proud cosponsor.
Lindsay Freitas, American Lung Association in California, also proud cosponsor.
Kelly Beam on behalf of March of Dimes in support.
Braden Roberts with the Health Officers Association of California in support.
Lydia Born American Academy of Pediatrics in support.
Megan Allred, California Dental Association in support.
Alexis Fernandez on behalf of both First Five California and the First Five Association in support.
So I assume on behalf of Health Access California in support.
Fred Knower representing oncology in support.
Any witnesses in opposition?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Politrite on behalf of the premium cigar retailers. On principle alone, they're opposing this, that they figure if you're 18 years old, you're going to war, you ought to be able to smoke a cigar. So it is what it is.
Angela Haywood on behalf of the NAACP in opposition to this bill for the reasons previously stated.
Dana Nichol with P. Conatyne Associates, representing AMBET, the American Legion, the Military Officers Association of America, and the Vietnam Veterans of America. In 1971, the age to vote was lowered from 21 to 18. A backdrop to this was the war in Vietnam. It was argued that if you are old enough to fight and die for your country, you're old enough to vote. We maintain that if you are old enough to serve in the military, you should enjoy the same freedoms of choice that the rest of the adult population is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in opposition? Any questions for the author? We have a motion to move the bill. Do pass to appropriations? Why don't we take the roll? No, we don't want closing the... No, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair members, I respectfully ask for an aye vote.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Hernandez.
Hernandez.
Hernandez, aye.
Hernandez, aye.
Morel?
Anderson.
Anderson.
Bell?
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Bell, aye.
Hall?
Hall?
Hall, aye.
Leno?
Leno, aye.
Maguire?
Maguire, aye.
Maguire, aye.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, aye.
Mitchell, aye.
Monning?
Monning, aye.
Morlock?
Morlock, no.
Nielsen?
Nielsen, no.
Nielsen, no.
Pan?
Pan, aye.
Wolk?
Wolk, aye.
Morel, no.
Morel, no.
Is that eight, three? I will gladly give the gavel back to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you for the privilege. I believe Senator Anderson is absent, and we can call the absent members so we can lift the call. Does he come in or not? Does he come in or not? Do you know if he's... So, want to verify? I believe Senator Nielsen had a comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing the comment. I figured it'd be better to do this at the end, but I say this with all sincerity and with passion and no hints of facetiousness at all. I would hope that all of those well-intended people who spoke here today in support of these many bills would be similarly concerned about marijuana, smoke, and its deleterious impact on our brains and our health, and the impact on our children, and that they would be heedful and mindful of that prospectively as marijuana becomes an increasing issue for our children and all of us.
Thank you, Senator. We're going to go ahead and lift the call for all the bills. My understanding is Senator Anderson won't return, so we're going to start off with item number one.
Before you do that, Mr. Chair, if I could just say to you and the committee members and members of the public, I apologize. My absence here was no result of my lack of belief in the importance and integrity of the issues being discussed. I am a Rules Committee member, and we had some pretty controversial confirmations that required that I was there. So please accept my apology, but I'm ready to cast my votes.
Apology accepted. So item number one, SB five, Leno, call the absent members.
Anderson.
Anderson.
Mitchell.
Mitchell, aye.
Mitchell, aye.
Nielsen?
Nielsen?
Nielsen, no.
Vote count is nine to three, and that bill is out. Item number two, SB six, Monning. Call the absent members.
Morel?
Morel?
Anderson?
Anderson.
Mitchell?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, aye.
Mitchell, aye.
Nielsen?
Nielsen, no.
Nielsen, no.
Vote count is nine to two, and that bill is out. Item number three, SB seven, Hernandez, call the absent members.
Anderson?
Anderson.
Vote count is nine to three. That bill is out. Item number four, SB eight, Lou, call the absent members.
Anderson?
Anderson.
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Bell, aye.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, aye.
Mitchell, aye.
Vote count is nine to three, and that bill is out. Item number five, SB nine, Maguire, call the absent members.
Anderson? Anderson? Mitchell? Mitchell? Mitchell, aye. Morlock?
Current vote count is nine to two. That bill is out. Item number six, SB ten, Bell. Call the absent members.
Morel? Morel? Morel, no. Anderson? Mitchell? Mitchell? Mitchell, aye. Mitchell, aye.
Current vote count is nine to three. That bill is out. That concludes the business of the day, and we are adjourned. Thank you.